Educating, Informing, Serving. TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda? And I just ask everybody, if you're not talking, just to have yourself on mute, because it makes a lot of extra noise here. So, are there any adjustments to the agenda, Denise? You don't have to be on mute, Denise. Jimmy?
No.
All right. Minutes from the prior meeting. I will make a motion to approve them.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Public comments. If we can hold it to no more than three, three minutes, that would be good. Who wants to go first? I can't see everybody exactly on my screen here. April, do you have anything? No? Darlene, anything for public comments?
The only thing I wanted to comment on was, I'm not taping the meeting because I didn't get piled out until late, so I couldn't go get the recorder.
Okay.
Is there a feature on here that you can record it? Hannah?
Supposedly, but I'm not seeing the option right now.
Okay.
So I probably, there's all kinds of weird things turning features on and off for you. So apparently, we don't have that right now. I don't see it.
Okay. If not, we will move on. There are none. Boards and officials. Do we have any... Boards and official information? Janet?
There, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay. Um, a couple of things. I heard from the Algeir grant, and it looks like everything's okay for that. Um, but the only thing they're not going to pay is the Vermont, the $42 on the Vermont tax.
Can, okay.
How much was that grant for?
It was just over $3,200.
And they're not going to pay only $42 of it? That's pretty good.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, because I suppose if we had, if we had purchased it, there wouldn't have been the tax anyways there, so green, so that's probably why they won't do it, so. But I think we can certainly live with that. We've got a $1,000, or a little less than $1,000 computer and everything, so I guess we can pay the $42 for that. All right.
Was it purchased through private sale and then they just...
Janet?
Yes, I purchased it through Amazon and sent in the receipts and everything, so I had to pay a sales tax.
Okay, well, that's not too bad.
Yeah. Um, anybody else for boards and officials? Nobody?
I think Sherri might be trying to talk, but she's muted. Sherri, unmute.
That, I'm unmuted, yep. Got it.
Go ahead, Sherri.
I didn't realize you were on boards and officials already. I just wanted to make sure that the report that we submitted for the meeting house got to where it needs to go. I sent it to Darlene during the week and included with that a copy, or the amount that we wanted included in the budget. And given that Janet's on the Budget Committee, I figure that piece got there, but I wanted to make sure that the town report piece got to whoever is putting that together.
Well, that would be the auditors, and I don't know if it got there, but we, we have until January to get that in there, so we'll, if, if it hasn't, haven't made it to the right person yet, we'll have time to get it to them.
David, I did receive it.
Okay, all right.
So you'll send it on to the auditors, Darlene, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you very much.
And I informed Hannah of what your amount was.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Um, I'm trying to, go ahead.
How much was the amount?
$2,500.
Okay.
That's, I think that's the same amount that we asked for last year.
I think.
Yes, it is.
Right. So it will just be included as part of the town budget, not a separate item, or a separate warrant, um, in the morning. I, I'm trying to think what else I might need to share. I mean, I do, I don't know if you know this or not, but I do just want to say that it was delightful to have 13 people gather with masks far apart from each other on the lawn at the meeting house a week ago, Sunday, last Sunday? A week ago Sunday, for the lighting of the Christmas tree, which was just so much fun, even though there were very few of us, and it was, you know, socially distanced and all of that. But, you know, we look forward to being able to do that next year in the right way, with maybe some hot cider and some carols, and hopefully more people, and not feeling like we have to stay far away from each other, but it was nice to see people come out. I don't know if you've all had a chance to get by. I know I'm not getting out much at night these days, so last night, I think, was the first time I drove by there in the dark and saw the lights on, and was pleased to see them still there.
How late are the lights on? Because I went by there, I forget what time it was, and they weren't on, and...
Well, they're solar powered, so they should be on when it's dark, and I don't think there's a timeframe on them, but if you went by, like, at 3:00 in the morning and they weren't on, that's good to know.
Yeah, no, it was earlier than that, but it was dark out.
Okay.
At night, so I, I didn't know if...
Well, they, um, the night that we were there, we did it at 5:00, and the lights all came on. We weren't sure if it was going to be dark enough, but it was. So as long as it's dark, those lights should be on, and if they're not, it may be that the, you know, whatever the charge for the day is, it's exceeded it, and that's why it's out. But anyway, it looks great. I want to thank Linda Taylor for donating a wreath that's on the front door of the meeting house at this point as well. And of course, Jay and Ginger for contributing the tree. We are, I, you know, we're all done with that project for the roof trusses, so that's good news, that, as Don puts it, the hurricane protection is in place. There's a little bit more that needs to be done with a couple of beams up there. He got the okay from the engineer to cut those beams in half and bring them up, and then bracket them together. So I think he'll be in touch with folks like maybe you, Jimmy, to talk about getting them down there, sawing them in half, because these are, these are huge beams. And then, once that's done, we'll get them up, and he'll put, he'll get them in place, and we'll be done with that. I did have a request from someone in town recently about renting the building. I haven't heard back from that individual as yet, so I don't know if they are still wanting to pursue it or not, but I was pleased with that, because that's the direction we want to go in and start getting some income coming from that, so I just thought it was encouraging to know that that's already happened.
When were they thinking about renting it? Hopefully, not when there's freezing cold and 90 feet of snow out there.
Exactly. And I don't know that, Denise, I did ask that question, and I didn't get an answer to that, so I don't know. And if it was now, then they might be looking at alternative plans right now, because it's not a good time to get in there. They were interested in, I think, having, doing an engagement and then exchanging vows for a wedding. I don't know if that was going to be two different events or all in one, but that was what the request was. So I'm hoping that they'll give me a call, but haven't heard back yet.
And do you have a price, do you have a price set for that, or is, would that be by donation only? How would you...
Yeah, yeah, it's a really good question. I think it's something that we need to talk about. We don't have a price, and I think that it probably, I mean, I, I think, I, at this point in time, given what the condition of the inside of the building is, I would be hard-pressed to put any kind of high number on that, so it might be by donation only. But as we proceed with getting things spruced up on the outside and the inside, you know, then we might rethink that, and, you know, also think about, well, what are you, what are you getting it for, and, you know, what's the duration and all of that, and try and figure out, you know, some way that we might put numbers on those things. But right now, it's just been more a matter of, let's get it shored up and now cleaned up, and start thinking in those directions down the road.
Yeah, I think we had talked one time about coming up with a, with a policy and stuff for renting it, but I don't know if that, whether that ever went, and I don't think it...
Yeah, I think you're right, and I, I can't remember any specifics about that, and I don't, I don't think a policy came from us about it, but I could be wrong.
And we should probably check with BTBLC what, if that's covered, if we rent it out for a venue, I'm, we need to double-check that it's covered under our policy.
Would it be different than the school building?
I don't think it would be. I think it would be covered, but I think we'd want to just be sure.
Right.
That it was.
Yep.
And that if, if we needed to make some adjustment for somebody renting it, then we could make the adjustment in the policy, but I...
It, it might be, you know, if you rent it, it might not be covered, but if it's donation, it might be. I don't know. We would have to, you know, check with them.
Hmm, okay.
All right. Anybody else for boards and officials?
I see Lynn's hand is raised.
Hi, I would report on the school board.
Lynn, yes, go ahead.
Sorry I'm late, I had trouble getting on. We, from the meetings we've had this week, I wanted to report the teachers have had some professional development training on the online presentation, and they were able to put that into use when we had the week off following Thanksgiving. And report was that there was a very good, uh, number of the students that came, that signed up each day, and a lot of participation. The teachers were really encouraged. And let's see, um, with the training they've had, they've been able to do more online with the children, more time with the children, and have one-on-one times with individual children during what they call office hours. So it sounds like they're gaining more skills and, and more knowledge on how to run the online pieces.
And I know, I, I do know today, because of the, the snow, it was actually a remote learning day, so they're really not going to have snow days, so whatever is planned in the budget, um, the snow days, if, that were planned, will probably not be used unless it's...
Right.
Something, because today was supposed to be a snow day, but they used it as a remote learning day, so they still were in school.
Right.
All right. Anything further that you've heard? I know that Westminster has set a date for a meeting on separating from the union. Have you heard any more on that?
No, I didn't hear any more reported on it. Sounds like the vote that they're going to be doing would be in January.
Yes.
But I haven't heard anything more than that.
And how long after they have a vote?
Don's not here, is he?
How long after they have a vote do we have to have, do we have to have a meeting after their vote?
Yes.
Yes.
We have to meet and determine whether we agree to let them out, and that's one of the things the commission is supposed to be looking into, is the price, the costs of being by ourselves, or continuing with Westminster to see which is the better way to go.
Okay. And we would only have a vote if they approve it, which...
Right.
Probably will, so.
Yeah. So do you know if Don has gotten the group going yet, the commission room?
I spoke to him a couple of times about it. He had it the first time. I'm not sure what the status is of it. But he knows, he knows that we need to get going on it, but I don't know the status of this meeting. That's why I was hoping he was here, but I don't see him here, so.
Okay.
All right.
All righty.
Anything else, then?
Uh, nothing I can think of, unless there's some questions that people have that I could try and answer or find answers for.
All right. I don't hear anybody.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
If there's nothing more for boards and officials, we'll move on to approval of items from the November meeting that weren't on the agenda there. The, um... We were, we voted to agree to get into discussions with the Windham North East Supervisory Union on the chance that they wanted to rent the former elementary school. That was not on the agenda, and this would just be a ratification of that vote. I'll make a motion that we ratify that.
I'll second that motion.
All right. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Have they actually even gotten back to you about that?
They have not. They have not.
Okay.
But they, they indicated it would be, they were at the very early stages of it themselves, so. The local emergency management plan, um, we voted to go for the grant on that, and I will, I will make a motion that we ratify that vote.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Where are we in that process with the grant?
The grant's been submitted, and I've heard from the state that, that there was no problems with it, and she expected that we would be getting the grant, but we haven't got the approval for that yet, or been awarded the grant, but she, the lady at the state indicated that she thought we would be getting the grant, so. All right. Anything else on the items from November? We'll go on to options for town meeting. The state has, and I don't remember the law, the, the number of the law that they passed, but they indicated that we are able to have an Australian ballot for election of officers and articles this year on a vote of the, of the select board, um, where it would usually be a vote of the town to have to go to an Australian ballot system. As it is now, we're not supposed to have more than 10 people in a group. We don't know when that will change, how that will change between now and, and town meeting. But we have to have everything together and set for January, um, to know what kind of town meeting we're going to have, if it's going to be a traditional town meeting, or if it's going to be an Australian ballot vote for the off...
David, if we choose the Australian ballot and then come March, everything is okay and we can't have the meeting, can we switch it, or does it have to remain?
I think it has to remain, because we have to decide what we're going to do by January, by the time that, well, before that, because we have to have everything together for the, for the town report by the 25th, I think it is. Is that right, Darlene?
That's been the usual date.
Yes, that's the usual date.
It's the 25th when we have to have all the articles and everything in?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Go on.
So David, I, you did specifically say elections, but does that mean also Australian ballot for all of the articles that would be on the warrant?
Yes. Yeah, there would be...
Wow.
First town meeting. It would be election of all officers by Australian ballot and a yes or no on the, on the articles as well.
And, and I'm assuming that we would be looking at perhaps a virtual town meeting? Is that likely?
You can't have a virtual town meeting.
Oh, okay, because the votes are happening Australian ballot.
Yeah, you, you would have an informational meeting prior, that could be virtual, prior to, uh, prior to the vote, you'd have to have one of those, but you can't have a virtual town meeting.
Wow, that's big.
This would only be for this year. It wouldn't continue on into 2022 if, as the law is written right now, it, it only goes for this year, so.
So David, if someone wanted to run for an office, would they need to have a petition?
No, you just have to sign a, a form, agreeing to have your name on the ballot. There's no, no requirement for signatures on a petition.
And they would get that form from Darlene?
They can get that form from Darlene, or I believe they can get it on the Secretary of State's website.
And what about current people who are holding, who still want to stay? They would still need to get that form from Darlene?
Yes. You'd, you still have to sign the form. Anybody that wants to run for an office has to agree to have their name on the ballot.
And is there a timeframe on that piece? I'm just curious about how the Athenian could be helpful in getting that word out if there are, you know, people interested in running for something, so they know what they would have to do and when they would have to do it, because obviously, you're not going to be able to take nominations from the floor.
No, you have to do it by the 25th of January, when the same date is, all the articles and things have to be in, you have, would have to have your, and I believe it's a consent, consent for candidacy, or, I'm not sure that's the exact term that it's called, but you would have to have that in at, by the end of January, so.
I would recommend having that to us by January, um, by the 21st of January. Looking at my calendar, that's our Thursday meeting, and, because that wouldn't give us much time to get it put together.
Yeah, I mean, that would, that would be optimal, to have everything ready on that day, and the ballots and everything done. We still have to approve the, the, uh, the warning and the articles that are going on that, but we don't have, um, but we don't have any say over the candidates, or who's going to run, or who's not going to run. So it would be best to have it by the, our meeting night, so that we can, so we can agree to it. But they don't have to until the last day, and I think it's the 25th. Darlene can check on that to be sure, but if somebody decided at the very last minute, they could still do it. So we, I don't, I don't really want to say that we want to put on a, a deadline prior to when the legal deadline is, so.
So I, just thinking about using the Athenian as a way of getting word out about this, I would ask, rather than counting on me to get the details right from this meeting, I would ask one of you, either the board members or Darlene, to put together what would need to go out to the public, and we will certainly either put it in the Athenian, let's see, December's already out there, we'll put it in January's Athenian, or if it's not ready for the beginning of January, we'll put it out as a special email notice to the Athenian list.
What's the date you need for the, um, for the Athenian?
Well, generally, we are, have been trying to keep with our first Friday of the month, but the first Friday of January is January 1st. Not that anybody's going to be doing a whole lot for New Year's Eve, or New Year's Day, but I don't, I haven't spoken to Dennis yet, so I don't know if we're going to aim for that date, or if we're going to aim for the following week, because I think last year we might have pushed it out a week, because January 1st fell, I don't remember how it fell, but anyway. So I would, I mean, if you can have something for us by the very last of December, that would be great. Usually, if we're, when we're aiming for a Thursday or a Friday, if we have things in our hand that Monday or Tuesday, that works.
Okay.
I'll check in with Dennis, and I will let you know.
I think one of us can write something up.
That'd be great.
Brian, and, well, we haven't decided that that's what we're going to do, but if we do, we can...
Well, we really don't have an option if we can't have more than 10 people.
Yeah, I mean, by March, we may very well be able to, but we have to figure out what we're going to do for January, and everybody, if we are going to have an Australian ballot, everybody has to have their names in and everything for January, so I think that this year that we probably should just go to an Australian ballot, and...
I mean, if, if we knew what the weather was, we could really socially distance across the field out there with a microphone, but...
But what if it was today?
Yeah.
That's it.
David, uh, who's going to make up the ballots?
I, I don't know. I haven't contacted the Secretary of State. I was going to do that to see if they, because they print up the November ballot, correct?
Yes, they do.
I don't know if they would do that, or if we will have to have it printed. I'm not sure if we're going to have to mail out ballots to everybody or not. That's something we're going to have to find out between now and, and the end of January, but...
And there's no online option for any of this?
No.
Yeah.
There will be an online, um, a hearing, a, a informational meeting prior to the vote. I think it has to be within 10 days of the vote, but there's no voting at that meeting. It's just asking questions and discussing, discussing the articles, so.
Now, is the town clerk's going to have to be open that day to receive ballots?
Yeah, you, what we're going to do is, we're going to have to run it just like a, just like the November...
Poll. Election.
Okay.
It's going to, it's going to need poll watcher, you know, work in the polls.
We have that anyway, because of the high school votes usually, right?
The high school vote, River Valley Union vote there, so, yeah. But it's going to be an all-day, all-day event there.
Okay. Would it be like a 10 to 7 thing, probably?
Yes.
So anybody else have any questions or ideas about this, or concerns?
So David, I just want to be clear that you just said, we don't, we haven't decided yet. You haven't decided if you're going to do it, or you haven't decided if you're going to send something for the Athenian.
Oh, we'll send something for the Athenian if we do it.
Okay, all right.
But we just voted on it, yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to be clear.
Yep. Anybody else have any questions, or Jimmy?
Uh, there's information about this. It's Act 162 on the BLCT website, if anybody wants to look up.
Yeah, they have a, they have...
Information on it.
They do have a good, uh...
Yes, there's multiple, multiple pages of information about it.
Yeah. All right. Anybody else? Well, I will make a motion that the March town meeting be a, be held by Australian ballot, both the election of officers and the articles for 2021, for March of 2021.
I'll second that motion.
Could you repeat that, David? I didn't get it all.
I make a motion that the 2021 annual town meeting in March be held by Australian ballot for both the officers and for the articles under consideration. And there will not be a, it's not part of the motion, but it should be in there, that there will not be a traditional town meeting.
And David, so at the informational meeting would be the time that anyone wants to join a discussion on any of the articles? It would be at that point in time?
That's my understanding, yes.
I just wanted to have that clear.
Yep. Alright, no other questions, or? Alright, we ready for vote?
Did we have a second on that? I second that.
Seconded it. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Alright. So we will have something to you, uh, Sherri, for uh, right around the first of the, first of the year.
Okay, great, thank you.
Alright.
If you could, oh, sorry to interrupt, if you could also send it to me, I'll put it on the town website.
Okay, we will do that. Um, the 2021 budget. We had a few places that were, that we had left blank from the work session that we had. Everybody get the, the printout, Hannah sent?
Yep.
Any questions or anything on this? Anybody has?
I know Michael sent us um, an email earlier that the rate for the trucking, for the um, Triple T is going up to $130 an hour. Add about $7,000 onto the, as it stands, about $7,000 onto the trash budget.
How much did you say it was going up?
He said it was going up to $130, and that, let me just double check that email.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Yeah.
I think it's going up $20 an hour, I think it might be at 110 right now.
As of April 1st, the trash and recycle hourly rate will increase to $130 per hour, which, if everything remains the same, the increase will be $7,738.
That seems a lot.
I assume he's also gotten some information about reducing service to every other week for trash, but um, and he said he'd have that for our next budget committee meeting next week. So, so I think that's still sort of an open number on the budget then. Don't have enough information just yet.
I guess if it remains the same. Yeah, if it remains the same, that's what it would add.
So, but it's only going up $20 an hour?
For the trucking.
Yeah.
If it's only going up $20 an hour, that $7,000 seems like an awful.
That sounds like a lot to me.
Yeah, I, I wonder if his calculation is off.
I wonder also, but he didn't give us any, yeah.
Well, we can figure that out, um, we can get something for that at the next budget meeting, and then uh, when we finish the budget at uh, the January meeting, we'll have, we probably should have that.
Would that cover trucking for both um, recycle and trash pickup?
Yes, I would.
Alright, well, I mean, I'm figuring how many hours, I, I just threw up three, three hours times 52 weeks times $20, and that comes up to 3,120, so. If you're including recycling in there, and maybe it's not three hours to go through town, I don't know what it takes, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, but then recycling's only every other week too, so.
Right, right.
I think instead of doing the calculations right now, we should just wait and get them, get it from Mike and Sherri in January.
I would agree, so. Alright, anything else that we need to further discuss? Anybody seen?
Um, Matt gave me the uh, list price there on the welder. The estimate on the welder and the safety equipment, and it came to just a little over $3,000.
Yeah. So why don't we put that down for 3,100? Is that reasonable?
Yeah, I put it in for 3,200, but um.
32 is fine.
Did you put that in the small equipment?
I put it under highway garage general supplies.
Okay.
Alright, anybody have anything else for that?
Um, our last budget meeting, Greg Allen did uh.
The budget?
Budget, no.
Did you? Jan, Janet, did you?
No, I was just gonna say, uh, nothing for the budget, but we did talk to Greg Allen about the truck.
And?
And he uh, the um, oh god, I'm getting tongue-tied here. Um, said it was probably, for a new one would be 160,000 with a five or a seven-year extended warranty. And that a new uh, second-hand one would, it's hard to price them, but it'd probably be around 80,000. And for a trade-in value, now, when he came to the select board meeting a couple months ago, he had said 30,000. Now he's talking 10 to 15,000 as a trade-in. Um, we didn't question him about that drop, but that seems like a lot of.
Yeah, because we just put all that money into the truck, and he said it would be better for us to put the money into the truck, because we would get a larger trade-in value. And technically, if we want a new truck, we need to let him know by the, within the next couple of weeks, because he has, he doesn't really have any trucks available. He has a few ordered, but they are spook, getting spoken for really fast. So if we wanted one, we need to let him know within the couple of days. And um, he would put, put us in his list. If that town meeting gets voted down, then we would, we would not need to take the truck, but to the next on the list. If we're gonna use truck, he said there are a few being, some towns turn trucks in every so often, um, but he can't guarantee when the next one's coming in.
Okay. What, did, did he give you a price on uh, on uh, what they would, they, you talked about a guarantee of a trade-in value, if it was a new truck, did he give you the price of the guarantee? If we traded it in in five to seven years?
I think he said it was around 80,000, about half, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
But he didn't give, he didn't give us that figure with this. At the, I, I remember he was talking at the meeting, it would probably be like that, but he didn't give us a, a, a solid figure at that time. But he said we would if we bought one.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think, David, he really wants to get a solid figure, and he has all the information that he needs, exactly what we need. You know, he, he's a car salesman, and, and they try to get a smart, and they're not gonna give you a price and to sign on the dime, pretty much.
Yeah. But I think to, to tell the townspeople, I think we should have certainly some kind of a idea as to what. It, we can't say, well, we're gonna, there's a guarantee buyback for this for X number of dollars, but we don't know what the X number of dollars is gonna be.
We're gonna have in writing for him, what is our truck gonna cost us? What is he gonna go trade in, and what is the buyback going to be? It needs to be in writing from them. Because from one month to the next month, figures have changed drastically.
Yeah.
So one of the numbers that seemed significant to me was basically like the, if we financed a new truck, how much the payment would be per year is gonna be 28 to 29,000 dollars to have that new truck, so, which is significantly more, like 20,000 dollars more than what we've been putting into the equipment fund as a replace, to build up a replacement value for a used truck. So granted, we do have some of that money built up in the equipment fund already, like maybe enough for a single year's payment, but we'd have to keep paying on it for five years.
And then if we get another used truck like we just had, we just put 17,000 dollars into a vehicle that we've only had for a few years. So you have to think about all that. Because be, this past year, we've put so much into that freight liner, it isn't funny.
Yeah, I mean, I think for, for information to the town, we need to get a uh, how much we have spent on maintenance for it and repairs each year, so.
We haven't paid that 17,000 dollars, we voted only a 15,000 on that, so.
Correct.
Haven't heard anything more, I did get another bill for 17,000, um.
Have you, have you paid the 15 at all yet?
No, no.
What do you wanna do about that, David?
Well, I mean, they, they, we told them it wouldn't, not over seventeen, uh, not over 15. Um, and they knew that going into it, and they were told that, so. I am not, uh, I am not inclined to, to pay the other 2,000.
I'm wondering if the select board could write a letter, if that's what you decide, and then um, when Darlene and I send the check for 15,000, we could include a letter.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. What do you, Denise, what do you think?
I, I think that's reasonable, because um, he was there that night, and he, he, Craig knew the motion, and I was very leery about even spending that much on, on the vehicle in the first place. And he, he guaranteed us if we spent that much, we would get up close to $30,000 at trade-in. And then the other night, he was telling us like 15,000, and that's not even what, the amount of work that we've put in it this year.
So yeah, Denise, can you, would you be able to draft the letter up? And we can sign it?
Yeah, I can try to get that done, I, I would have to do it this weekend, I do not have time tomorrow.
Alright.
So I just have something on the new truck. Um, even if we do buy a new truck, we are not guaranteed not to have problems. Um, as we have found out with the one ton, that is only a few years old, and we've had quite a few problems with that, with the electrical system. So as a taxpayer, I would still be cautioned to spend 160 dollars on a brand-new truck after we've just put 17,000 dollars into the one that we have, and we know now what we have.
So Tina, are you saying hang on to the freight liner because we've already put so much money into it?
I feel like we should for at least a couple more years and build up our equipment fund, so that we would have a bigger down payment to bring that. What did Hannah say, it was a 29,000 dollar payment a year? If we could put some more down and have the freight liner for a trade-in, I would just feel better as a taxpayer to have a little bit more down on a brand-new truck when you're looking at 160,000 dollars. After knowing that we have a brand-new one-ton, and we've had quite a few problems with that. So I know some of that was under warranty, but we still would have bills on top of it, so going brand-new does not take away having to deal with maintenance costs. That's just my opinion as a taxpayer. I don't know if that makes sense or not.
No, I, I absolutely understand what you're saying, and that's why I tell you, I think we need the, the, the comparison of what we have paid in, what we paid for the freight liner, how much we paid in for repairs and stuff, and then compare that to what we would pay for um, for a new truck. So.
And just because we put all that money into the freight liner this year and the past years, that doesn't mean we're done with repairs for it.
Oh no, because this, the, the repair that they did, the major repair they did was basically a muffler, uh, I mean, it's not a muffler, but it's basically a muffler for the thing. Uh, there's a ton of other things that could go on the freight liner, so. Um, just because we put this in, it doesn't mean there's not, there's not the chance of other repairs needed at any time, so. Alright, but we will discuss that in uh, um, at the uh, January meeting and how we're going to proceed with that, so. Anything else for budget?
The only thing I had left was just if the surplus, I'm guessing there's gonna be somewhere around a 30,000 dollar surplus based on um, where it's looking right now, and just in the past years, we've taken that off of what we tried to raise for the next year, and just wanted to check with the board if that's where you're headed for this one too.
That doesn't count the money for the uh, um.
Bathroom.
Right, that would still, you would still write an article for how that got used, but so the additional surplus, yeah.
I think we should put that toward reducing the, the expense for next year there. Uh, you're here, and I don't know, but the, the school may go up 10, uh, 9, 10%. So I would think we would want to try and put that toward.
I'll make a motion that we put. Hannah, you, actually, are you recommending putting the whole surplus too, or just a portion like we've done?
We've always put the whole surplus, and we've actually been trying to reduce the rolling surplus on the, in the fund as well. I don't know where we're at with that this year yet, but would certainly know by the January meeting. But I'm just talking about the normal, like, the surplus of what got raised for this year, but didn't get spent.
Yes.
I, I would, I would recommend also to roll it all, roll, roll it back over so that we can reduce the taxes to use it towards reducing the tax rate. We will also need an article in the town report for what to do with that 32,000 dollars.
Yes.
For the bathroom.
Yes. We will need that, um.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, um, I'm just curious as to, um, I mean, I know for the meeting house, there's funds in there from this year that haven't been spent. Part of it was held as match for a grant, so when you're talking about surplus and funds that aren't spent, I'm curious as to where they're coming from. And obviously, the top of the list for me are the meeting house funds included in that, or are these other general town funds, um, et cetera?
This is just the general fund.
They're general, they're not, they're not the meeting house, they're not the Cemetery Commission, they're.
They're, they're not funds that were earmarks for specific things. It, it's just from the general budget.
Okay.
Like, for instance, we didn't do.
Curious as to how we have 30,000 dollars, so.
We chose not to do a number of contracted services this year because of COVID to save money, so there was purposeful saving going on, so like, I don't think, we didn't do crack ceiling or over-the-rail mowing.
Guardrails will put on hold.
Guardrail, yeah. So, it's from stuff like that.
But is it, is it a, a regular thing to have a rolling surplus, like, that's what I gathered from what I just heard?
That's not the rolling surplus, that's the, that's just the straight, normal operational surplus. The rolling surplus is money that was built up over years past that, so we don't ever get the, the town down to zero or minus zero, but so we've been seeing how much we can reduce that without going too far.
Okay.
Alright.
I mean, it's always good to have some extra money for a rainy day in case there's an emergency.
Sure.
But.
Yeah, but.
We can reduce.
I think that it's reasonable to put that back toward reducing taxes this year, instead of instead of rolling it into a non-reserve fund, alright. That's it for budget, uh, warrants and mail. I will make a motion uh, to approve the uh, warrant, and that we will uh, each go to the town office and sign said warrant, which I have not done for the last month either, so. Have you still got both of those, Darlene?
Oh, let me get down there. Uh, uh, we haven't done the warrant this month yet, we were gonna do it today, but we couldn't get to the office, um, because I wasn't plowed out early this morning, and.
Just give me a call and let me know when they're ready.
Yeah. We, we're gonna work on them, when did we say, Hannah, Saturday? No, Monday.
Monday.
We're gonna do them Monday.
Alright.
So they'll be ready. So they'll be ready anytime after Monday.
All right. Is there a second to approving the warrant?
And I, I'll second that. And Darlene, I will try to get that letter to you. I'll email it to you and then if you print it out, put it warrants and then when they come in to sign warrants, they can sign it.
Yes, okay.
All right. Is there, and Denise seconded that. All those in favor of approving the warrant? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Roads. Is Matt here or is he out on the road?
He might come sleeping from plowing all night. He's not, um, he's not on. He's not on, on the list. So I can tell you the roads were snowed, they're cleared. Yeah.
All right. Do, anything else for roads? Anybody have anything? All right.
I, I have a question. Um, I, I know that, uh, there's been, um. Something about trees on Route 35 that were thought to need to be cut and I really didn't know which trees they were. And then I saw a note from, I think it was last month or the month before saying that the trees were cut. And I've been noticing these trees that are hanging over Route 35 when you're going down below, um. Towards Stephen Fein's driveway. There are two pine trees that are hanging over a good bit there. And they're still there, so I'm not sure, um, what the trees were that there was a concern about and whether or not those trees are on somebody's list as being a concern.
I saw the power company out there and I think that, uh, they were the ones that will be cutting those trees because.
Okay.
Power line, so.
Okay, okay, makes sense.
You haven't been there the last couple of days, they may have been cut.
Okay. You know, you know the ones I'm talking about though. They've been there for quite a while.
I do.
Okay.
But bringing them down will bring them right on to the, right on to the line, so it's, that's the power company deal.
And the power company has been called, David?
Yeah, they, about it, I'm sure. But I think they, I, I saw them there not today, but yesterday I think it was, so I think that they have, uh. I don't know that they're gone, but hopefully.
So actually, I just have a question while we're on the subject of these and Green Mountain Power. I know you, oh, they were gonna move all the lines from when they started moving them, uh, on the low road and the upper road, this part of Route 35. Past my house, they haven't done that yet. Is there any plan, do you know, for them? To continue moving the lines out of the woods?
I don't know. I think they've done what they had approval for from the state. Um, but I don't know if they're, if they're complete or not. I think everything that their permit granted them, they have done, I believe.
Okay, cause I was told that all that were up, all the lines that were up in, in the woods by Steve Feins were all gonna be moved down to the road.
I'm not sure that those were. There were other lines that were deep in the woods behind Darlene's house and those were the ones that were moved up. Um, and I think that's what they're talking about, but not the ones that are. Visible from the road.
Okay.
I think, I.
I mean, I know the ones that go. Across from my house, they're up in the woods almost, they're almost a mile in. They're quite, they're quite a ways up through there. I, I'll, I'll call Green Mountain Power and find out.
Okay. All right. Uh, executive session, I don't have anything. Do you, Denise?
Um. I don't know if that legal matter needs to go to an executive session or not.
Jimmy, do you have anything?
Uh, we can discuss it really quick in the executive session. People like to.
I'm not sure how we go about executive session here. Virtually, to tell you the truth about it. Anna, do you know?
I think the best way would be to do it at the very end of the meeting and everybody else drop off.
But then we have nobody controlling it because I signed in on the wrong account.
You can drop off and sign back in on your account and I'll wait for you and then I'll drop off.
Okay. All right. Uh, any further business?
Hi, if you don't mind my jumping in here, my name is RT Brown. I'm with SEVDS and maybe there was a.
We, we can't.
We can't hear you. Could you speak up?
Yeah, um. Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yeah, a little better.
Okay, thank you. I'm with SEVDS Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategies. Um, I, I don't know if I was supposed to speak in, um. General, general comments. Um, I'm happy to come back next month, um, but I, I had it on my, my, my calendar that I was presenting tonight.
Uh, I don't believe that I saw that you were gonna be here tonight, but, uh.
Okay.
But you can go now if you want, if you have something you'd like to talk to us about. I don't have any, nobody has any objection. Denise?
I don't have an objection.
Okay, I, I, I will keep it brief then. It's late and I know you have an executive session to get to, but, um. Back in July, we sent a, um. As we do all towns in the Wyndham region, a municipal funding, um, request. Um, I'll back up, uh, and introduce myself. My name's RT Brown. I, I work for the Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation. I'm here on behalf of SEVDS Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategies. And we, um, go to every town within the region, all 27 towns and, um, request municipal support. Um, last year, we're, we're pleased to say that over 75% of the region supported the work that we do. I know my colleague Sarah presented to you folks last year. Do most of you remember that?
Yes.
Presentation? Okay, all right, so, so I, I, I'll assume that you understand the relationship between BDCC and, and SEVDS. Um, SEVDS, we like to say leads with strategy and insights and, and, um, BDCC operationally fulfills, um, those strategies and insights, um, contractually. So we work. And build a more resilient economy and, um, we do that through a variety of programs and the great thing about. Uh, municipal funds is that they're used really in, in three ways. One is to, to implement the programs and projects that we all work on. Uh, one's for capacity. So for example, uh, last year we helped to bring 2.7 million dollars directly to other organizations. Uh, within the regions. That includes towns and businesses and nonprofits. And then we use the funding, um, municipal funding for, uh, and I know you're familiar with the world of grants. We use it for leverage. Because it's, it's really unrestricted funds, so oftentimes when you go for a grant, you have to have a two to one match or a one to one match. And, uh, we're able to use, um, municipal funding to help leverage to, to, to gain additional funding. Um, to help further our mission and, uh, bring additional dollars to the region for the work that we do. You know, we, just to touch on. Some of the work that we've done this year, when, when COVID hit in mid-March, uh, much of the staff pivoted to doing. The businesses, um, in the region, um, so. We, we conducted, uh, 16 to 18 and they're still going on what we call Business Resiliency webinars. We have the Wyndham Resiliency Team webinars. 806 businesses in the Wyndham region received over 27 million from the Paycheck Protection Program and those webinars really. Um, helped businesses understand how to access those. Uh, those types of programs as well as the other SBA program, the Economic Disaster Injury Loan Program. 143 Wyndham, um, region-based businesses, um, received the, the Restart Vermont Technical Assistance, um, funding. Um, and that, those funds were up to 4,000 dollars. So like I said, you know, we're here to, we, we go to every town to ask for support. It, it, this year's ask for the town of Athens is 1,326 dollars. If I may just, um, tell one quick story about a, a business that I believe is still in Athens that, um. Was the beneficiary of the results of some of our programming. A couple of years ago. I had a gentleman, uh, that I was working with. On a business plan. He's a butcher and he was trying to start a business in Brattleboro, but for one reason or another, that didn't work out, so. Um, and at the time, he was living in New Hampshire and I recommended that he participate and we, I helped him. Get ready for a business plan competition, um, that took place in Keene. Keene, New Hampshire and he, he did participate and he actually won the business plan competition, so he was able to. Take that money, put it in his pocket and then fast forward about six months, it was either like six months or a year later, I come to learn that. He set up shop in Athens, Vermont. Um, so, um, it's a little bit, I think it was called. Butcher Pete's Mobile Meet, so he works, I think he works on a farm and, um, he has a little operation where he will go. With his equipment. That was financed through the winning of this business plan competition to someone's, um, either small farm or homestead to process any, um. Any game that they might have. So I, it's just, I, I, it's just a funny story that I, I like to share with folks, you know, how, how, the work that we do because we're a regional organization and, and. Sometimes we work with people and they end up, um, somewhere else in the region. So I'm happy to take any questions, but, um, really the, the summary is that I'm here to. Uh, make a, a formal ask, uh, about our municipal, annual municipal funding request and, uh. Hope that it can be included as an article in your town meeting.
Have you sent that, uh, request to the town office?
Yeah, it was sent back in July, so we're happy to resend it.
Yeah, if you could send that, if you could send that to the, uh, to the town office, um. Uh, sooner rather than later because our next meeting will be, um. It's, it's a month away, but we have Christmas, we have any number of things. All right.
David, can that be sent via email or to, to mail something?
Either way, either way. Do you have the town's email address?
Can you give it to me just so I have it? It won't be me that's sending it, so I want to make sure I, I communicate the information correctly.
Darlene, can you give it to him? It's TOWN.
TownofAthens@hotmail.com.
TownofAthens@hotmail.com. Wonderful. Thank you so much. Enjoy, enjoy your evening. I hope everyone's dug out. I know I still have work to do.
If they can put in the subject, uh, um, that it's for the, for the, um. The town report so that, it's a petition for the town report so that we make sure that we know what it's for and it doesn't accidentally delete it.
Absolutely. We will do that. I've taken the note. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any further business? Hearing none. Um, I, uh, Denise, you want to make the motion to go into executive session?
I've never mentioned to go into executive session, legal matter.
You kind of froze up. Maybe it's my computer, maybe it's yours. But Denise made a motion to go into executive session, uh, reference a legal matter where the premature public, uh.
My.
It's a town is substantial disadvantage and I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.